The special meeting of Annapolis City Council on Monday, April 29th, 2024 will be called to order at 7:00 PM. At this time, please join us for the invocation given by Alderman Arnett, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In this time of international turmoil and chaos nationally, we're facing some big issues here. Fortunately, not as dire as what we're seeing internationally, but we have the budget, the comprehensive plan, and a bunch of other issues. So I would ask us to just take a moment, take a deep breath, and collect ourselves to have a very good council meeting tonight.
Yes, sir. Mayor Buckley.
Here.
Alderman Tierney.
Here.
Alderman O'Neill.
Present.
Alderman Pendel Charles.
Present.
Alderman Wilson-Layson.
Present.
Alderman Shannon Meyer.
Present.
Alderman Gay.
Present.
Alderman Savage.
Present.
Alderman Arnett.
Present.
Thank you.
Mr. City Attorney, please present the first item of the agenda.
Yes, sir. The first item of the agenda is approval of the agenda.
Attorney, motion to approve the agenda. Alderman Savage.
I'd like to make a motion to add O524 and R1424, and I can explain myself.
I don't have any of that stuff. I don't have any of it.
Where are they, sir?
So these, we have printed out, it's the plastic bag, prohibition fee. I'm not going to get into the content, I just want to explain why I'm trying to make an effort to get this on the agenda today. It was on the draft agenda and just through some miscommunication got removed from the final agenda. And I'd already notified people that it was going to be on the agenda when I thought it was, so staff worked extra hard and got the staff report and everything done in time for this meeting, and so I want to thank them for all that. And Ms. Luther here printed out copies. I've been getting a lot of requests from some of you about getting this finalized, and Alderman Shandelmeyer and I have been working on it for the past few months. So my heart's not going to be broken if you want to wait till next meeting, but this is just a first reader, I thought, to keep the ball rolling.
Just on plastic bag?
Yes. It's the same thing as the county, except for three small changes, which I can get into later on.
Sure. Thank you.
Excuse me. Can you tell me what two pieces you stated, O5 and what?
O524 and R1424, which is the fee resolution.
Add it to first reader.
Correct.
Yep, correct. Is that how we add it, and then vote on it like that?
It's seconded.
Okay. We got a second from Alderman Arnett. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item of the agenda.
Yes, sir. The next item on the agenda is ceremonial item ID 8124, city council citation to Jimmy Silwick, April's Employee of the Month.
I think that got postponed on my agenda till, sorry, till next month. Next one.
Please motion to postpone, Mr. Mayor.
I think it was already taken off the agenda anyway, but it was just written into this script here, so we're going to just do it next week, yeah. Okay, we'll take a motion. Let me get a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item of the agenda.
Yes, sir. The next item on the agenda is petitions, reports, and communications, beginning with update from the mayor.
Okay. So, good evening. The last time we gathered, we introduced the operating and capital budgets for the upcoming fiscal year. Over the past two weeks, the Finance Committee has been reviewing those numbers and spending time each day with department directors and their teams to review the past year and discuss proposed spending allocations. I want to thank departmental leadership for being prepared and understanding how goals and outcomes are important for not just the council to understand, but also for the residents to hear. Many people have shared that the presentations from our directors this year were exceptional. Let's have a round of applause for the presentations. I agree, and I thank our hardworking department heads and all their hardworking teams for their efforts. We truly appreciate you. This past weekend, we played host to the Spring Sailboat Show at City Dock, and while we aren't privy to the attendance numbers yet, it looked like a very successful weekend. I want to acknowledge Premium Parking, our vendors who operate Hillman Garage, who were ready for all the newcomers to Annapolis. They had parking ambassadors stationed at both entrances throughout the weekend to ensure that everything ran smoothly. We thank you. Earlier this month, Rosalynn Johnson, Director of Recreation and Parks, worked with the Resilience Authority to issue two requests for proposal, or RFPs, for Cars Eltonia Beaches Heritage Park and for the newly acquired Moore Property. The RFPs are, one, looking for engineering firms to stabilize the shoreline, and, two, for a parks designer to create a master site plan. If you or someone you know has business interests in that work, please visit the website for the Resilience Authority of Annapolis and Anne Rondell County to learn more about those opportunities. Annapolis Police Chief Edward Jackson invited me to attend the police awards ceremony at the Bush Library on April 16th. We don't often get to hear all the amazing stories from our Annapolis police and the things they do on the job and on their own time to lift up our community. There's one of the people right there, Amy. Thank you. The awards ceremony was a wonderful opportunity for police to showcase that and more. I get to see officers moving up to the next rank in their careers, and to hear well-deserved commendations for them from the chief. I want to thank Attorney Mike Lyles and his team, including Karen Steele, along with City Ombudsman Hillary Raftovich, for recently putting together an outstanding training day for the volunteer members of the city's many boards and commissions. I'd also like to thank all our board and commission members for taking the time to attend this training in order to better serve our residents. A big thank you and a big round of applause for all those volunteers. Back on April 13th, the St. John's College croquet team, the Johnnies, squared off against the United States Naval Academy, the Mids, for the annual Annapolis Cup matchup. The Johnnies won the day, and as well as bragging rights for the next year. While this event is as much a social activity as a sport, it is something we all look forward to in the spring, and congratulations to both teams. It's lots of fun. Also, on the 13th, the city played host to the annual Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Parade. I thank all who participated and came out to cheer along the way. Our annual acknowledgement of Dr. King's contributions to American society and his ultimate sacrifice to the cause is an important reminder, not only of how far we have come, but also how far we still have to go. We have a few other parades coming up. Mark your calendar for Memorial Day on May 27th, Pride Parade on June 1st, Juneteenth on June 22nd, and July 4th for Independence Day. The city's Special Events Coordinator is currently seeking entries for both the Memorial Day Parade and the Independence Day Parade. To find out more, email specialevents@annapolis.gov. While the Pride Parade isn't until June 1st, Annapolis Pride recently hosted their kickoff event and countdown to the parade at the Graduate Hotel. They announced that this year's grand marshal will be clothing designer and Anapolitan Christian Seriano. He's huge in Hollywood, and he's an Annapolis boy, and we're so lucky that he's taken time out to be the grand marshal for this parade. To learn more about the parade and the huge events that are going on, and this year they're leaving from City Dock and making their way to a huge party at Maryland Hall, please go to annaplespride.org. More spring celebrations are approaching, including May Day this Wednesday. Be on the lookout for flower baskets on the doors and front porches of homes all over the city. In downtown, the Garden Club of Old Annapolis will judge and award prizes for the favorite baskets. This is the 69th year of the Garden Club's judging May baskets in Annapolis. Post your favorites on social media using the hashtag #MayDayAnnapolis2024. This Saturday, we have a crew heading over to Alderman O'Neill's ward for a cleanup at what will become our new Gateway Park. That is on Roe Boulevard. From 11:00 AM to 1:00 PM, we'll clean up an area between Maryland Archives, that is just after the State Tribers Building next to Grau's, and College Creek. In between those two places is a beautiful piece of property on the waterfront. Through a special arrangement with the State of Maryland and Anne Rondell Recreation and Parks, our aim is to create another point of water access. So please join us for the cleanup. We'll have a community cookout afterwards to reward everyone who's there for their hard work. It's just a two-hour cleanup, and we're going to build a little trail in on one side, and then we're going to access the Navy side at a later date. I'll see you all there. The city's NapTown Anti-Dope Movement will host a Spring Health Fair and Listening Session at People's Park on Calvert Street on Friday. May 10th, from 3:00 to 6:00 PM, there will be great resources available to help individuals and families, music, games, and much, much more, all to help promote healthy minds and bodies. Come along and learn, get healthy, and have fun, all at the same time. On Saturday, May 11th, the African Diaspora Festival will take place from 11:00 AM to 8:00 PM on Calvert Street. Will be closed for this celebration of culture, to honor the contributions that people of African descent have made here in Annapolis and across our state and around the world. This is a family-friendly, free event featuring art, culture, entertainment, food, and music representing African-American, Afro-Caribbean, Afro-Latino, and Afro-ethnic groups. Some of the local talent that will be performing are Prosperity Band, Project 360, Lace Guard, and Pocket 3, so come along for a great day out. Also, on May 11th, the annual Eastport Bridge 0.05K Race will be held. It has been described by Runners World Magazine as "the least challenging athletic event ever conceived." Organizers expect some participants might even take the whole five minutes to complete this grueling test of strength and endurance. All joking aside, the Eastport Bridge over Spa Creek will close for 10 to 15 minutes, depending on stragglers, at around noon on May 11th, so look out for that. This is an annual foot race, which of course will lead to a party, which is something they seem to do a lot of in Eastport. The party is not on the bridge, just to let you know that. Commissioning Week for graduating Michigan from the U.S. Naval Academy is May 7, 10 to 24. This year, the Blue Angels Flight Practice will be Tuesday, May 21st, with a flight show on Wednesday, May 22nd. You can reserve parking at Gotts and Knighton Garage, or park at Park Place and take the free Downtown Shuttle. Hillman Garage is another option, which we anticipate will fill up on both days, so get here early. Through our Commissioning Week, please give yourself plenty of time to navigate Annapolis, especially downtown. As always, we expect this to be one of the busiest weeks of the year. Congratulations to all the graduates of both the Academy and St. John's College. And lastly, before our next meeting, we will celebrate and honor our moms, or as you say here, our moms. That's American for moms. And grandmothers and the caregivers who lovely gave us the mom treatment on Sunday, May 12th, Mother's Day. I'd like to wish all the moms here on the council and out there in the world a happy Mother's Day, and I'd especially like to give a shout-out to my wife Julie, who is the mom of my two beautiful children, and I miss my mom, and love you, Jewel. So lots of love to all the moms out there. Now let's get on with the meeting. Thank you. Mr. City Attorney.
Yes, sir. The next item of business is the reports by committees.
Right. Alderman O'Neill.
Thank you very much.
A great mom.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. The Transportation Committee will meet on Wednesday, May 8th, at 4:00 PM here in council chambers. Topics of discussion will be an update from the bird folks, scooters and bicycles, as well as discussion from Premium Parking on the focus group that they've been working with to focus on making changes to both Hillman Parking and residential parking in districts 1 and 2.
Thank you. Alderman Pendel Charles.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to tonight recognize our public safety team. We have four resolutions on the agenda this evening. R2024, Public Service Recognition Week, May 5th through the 11th. R2124, International Firefighters Day, which is May 4th. National Police Week 2024, which is R2224, which is May 9th through the 18th. And tying them all together is R2324, Emergency Management and Public Safety in April, as well as celebrated in May. And we'd like to thank all of those representatives who are here this evening, from our police department, fire department, and our Office of Emergency Management, for what you do each and every day for the safety of the city, for the residents, the businesses, as well as the visitors. And we really salute you tonight. And I'm sure some of us have heard on the news, in Charlotte, North Carolina this evening, three officers were shot and killed. It's a tragic story whenever life is lost, but we thank you all for staying safe and running into danger when we're running away from it. And so we honor you, and God bless you all and be safe out there. Thank you so very much.
Alderman Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Finance Committee has been having meetings from April 15th through April 29th. All of the departments, as you said, have presented their budgets, and, you know, as you said, I'll echo your sentiments. They were excellent. The formats were excellent. Some of them had unique little pictures, and, you know, kudos to Chris Takubiak for being creative, and so it really has been great. The community grants have also been presented, and deliberations are underway this week so that we are able to finish our report this week and present to the next city council meeting on May 13th. We introduced a little procedure that for those who have full-time jobs and are not able to attend these meetings, that we have the shared drive where we have spreadsheets for Q&amp;A, and the departments have been very cooperative in answering the questions. So I'll reiterate that tomorrow, just to conclude on that, so all of my colleagues' questions are answered, and I really appreciate that, specifically Alderman Savage for paying attention and asking good questions. Thanks. And Alderman Arnett and Pendel Charles for attending every day.
Anybody else?
Oh, the next meeting's tomorrow.
Alderman Savage.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and yeah, thank you to the Finance Committee for organizing all of those meetings and presentations. Very helpful to watch after the fact, but I admit I'd watched them after the fact at double speed so I could get through them all.
Fast forward.
Very good. As far as environmental matters, our next meeting is going to be May 9th. We did not have an April meeting, just because I think we had enough meetings with the budget. So as far as our agenda, I don't know what legislation might be on there, but I do know I would like to have, well, it needs public hearing still, but I do know we may have a discussion about the budget as far as any kind of environmental things that the committee might want to add, I know, or change. I plan to bring up and hopefully get a presentation from our planning department about the forestry program, and that's going to have some relation to the comp plan as well. So that's about all I have. Oh, and I hope that the Eastport Race provides a nice aid station for everybody in the middle in case they have problems.
Water stations.
Definitely pull something.
It's hilarious.
Anybody else? Okay. Thank you. Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item of the agenda.
Yes, sir. The next item on the agenda is comments by the general public.
Okay, so during comments by the general public, if you are here to speak about O724 and your budget and appropriation of property tax, and forest conservation, and your fee schedule, and your fine schedule, and position classification, there'll be a separate hearing for that. So if you've signed up to speak about the budget or these things, please don't come up on the first round, come up on the next round. So I know that Tara is not here for that, so first up is Tara. Thank you.
I'm happy to report that we did it. The Willows got through the city process, officially owns the land, and is gearing up to break ground on 58 units of affordable housing. When I started going to the... That's good news.
Is it too early?
Well, you'll wait till the end. Hopefully, I'll be clapping at the end. When I started going to the Legion to discuss the Willows, I was quietly pulled aside by members there, and they'd often tell me, "I didn't grow up here, so I really didn't know what this place was like and what we were up against." It turned out Gunny isn't from here either. We bonded over our Philadelphia roots, and as outsiders recognize how truly far this tale of two cities is from being one Annapolis. So what exactly did we deal with? Well, the city is on its fifth director of planning, second city manager, and an advocate for another development, admonished us in an email to, quote, "comply or perish." Local attorneys are inclined to comply, so the Legion and the Willows both lost or fired two attorneys in this process. It was months at this podium, multiple virtual sessions with a planning commission, that people joke are the real one Annapolis, the 1% of the people whose opinions matter. The Legion members were right. I never expected it could be this hard. This process took way longer than it should have, but it was worth it. The Legion got the compensation that's been dangled in front of them for years, and a land for a well-deserved garden for heroes. The Willows has a waiting list, and the developer hopes for a smooth construction process, but like most things, our victory of closing was short-lived because we've recently found out we still need two more reviewers to sign off on the bond amount. So our permits that we have, we can't start until we get this bond amount resolved, and so hopefully we can put that behind us this week with direction from city leadership. And I really hope, as I've said throughout this process, you know, my comments have not been personal. I think this is a real victory for the city, and hopefully we can all be celebrating together at a groundbreaking soon. Thank you.
Thank you, Tara. That wasn't too bad in the end.
Yeah, I guess so. Yeah.
Well, I figured I wasn't sure if you were about five.
Is Curtis going to give it to us? Please come forward, Curtis, you're next up.
Take what we can get.
Curtis Jones, at 1400 Brenner Road, Annapolis Mall, 21409. I'm here to say thank you to the city, city hall, council workers, and all those that have a hand in getting this thing moved forward. And as my shirt says, and someone said it earlier this evening, commitment, honesty, integrity, respect, and that's what it took to get this thing going. And the Garden Parcel will be a great added feature to Forest Drive, and when it's completed, you'll see. And I believe in the fact that build it, they will come. And someone asked me where were the funds coming from, and my statement to them was, "Once I start building it, the people in Annapolis that have those funds in those deep pockets will see something positive going on, and they'll be willing to commit those funds to it." And that's what I have to say this evening, and thank you.
Thank you, Curtis. Thank you. Effie Brock? Please come forward, say your full name and address. Thank you.
Good evening. Effie Brock, 1306 President Street. I just wanted to start out by congratulating the residents of Ward 1, con job, guys, especially those west of Spa Creek Bridge on the north side of Spa Creek. I don't know how you did it, but you continue to impress me with your staunch ability to somehow get the city to allocate a ton of money towards you for water access. I'm really jealous, coming from the other side of Spa Creek. I took a little field trip today around pretty much every single point of water access in the city. Well, not all of them, not Ward 2, but starting in Amos, I went all the way around because Amos is in the CIP to be funded with bonds for water improvement on their bulkhead, which is in excellent condition and has a nice paddlecraft access. If you would like to take a field trip, you can do one shorter than me, go to Amos Park, and then go to Burnside Park, which is completely falling apart. It's totally dilapidated. The pylons are stacked haphazardly, one on top of the other, and splitting apart, splintered to hell. It's missing two cleats and one ladder, but that's nowhere in the CIP, oddly enough. On the north side of Spa Creek, you have 14 water end parks, seven of which already have floating piers with ADA compliant gangplanks. Again, congrats to you guys that are lucky enough to live pretty close to those and enjoy them. A lot of those, which are in great condition, will get more money in this CIP. I don't know how they'll change to be even better, but it is cool to see from across the creek where people do not have access to get in and out of the water, where the city is not pursuing Wells Cove, where it was extremely conciliatory unnecessarily in its original attempt to get a deed of easement, which is, I think, wrong, conceding point after point after point that if we acquired it as an easement at Wells Cove, we absolutely do not want the rough hands on the south side of Spa Creek to enter or exit the water there, nor be there when the sun sets, which is about 88 days of the year, prior to 5:00 PM. I don't know why it's going like this, but it is quite disheartening. In the CIP, there's an interesting note here. It says that the city recognizes the comprehensive plan, an excellent plan, by the way. I've read it thoroughly, I have my own copy. I took away the word "draft," I've marked it up, I've indexed it, if anyone wants an indexed copy. It says that the city comprehensive plan is a key component of the city's long-term capital planning. That comprehensive plan, unlike the CIP, mentions equity a lot in it. The CIP doesn't. It stresses the consideration of equity as a guiding principle. In the CIP, it says Recreation and Parks, considering the expansion of the park system, will be providing parks and recreation services to underserved areas. Underserved areas. Underserved. So if you're west of Spa Creek, or sorry, if you're west of Spa Creek Bridge on the east port side, you can't get in and out of the water. You just can't. Hawkins Cove is above water, it's muddy, it won't be constructed and redeveloped until 2026. Your guys aren't moving anywhere on Wells Cove, and I'm kind of worried that if the settlement comes out to be favorable to the side that I'm on, you will again ask for a deed of easement when you should just be asking for the deed to the land. But you need to consider equity when you are evaluating these projects and whether or not they are worth investing money into, especially when it comes to bonds, but really, I would love to see city council be advocating for a more equitable distribution of public funds when it comes to improving water access. I don't feel that that is going on right now. You cannot use the parks on the north side of Spa Creek for more than two hours unless you're a city resident, because there's a park permit parking restriction there. That doesn't exist on the side of the creek that a lot of the city residents live that are underserved, so please consider that also, because, sure, you can go to Amos Garrett, you can go to Lafayette, which is a beautiful... You can go to Lafayette, which is a beautiful park with an absolutely amazing floating gangplank and pier for the mayor's lovely rib, which is there, and it isn't missing a single cleat. But if you go through the CIP and you see the water improvement projects, you need to consider that they are highly concentrated in a very affluent part of the city, and they are not serving everyone. And we do not need another park that is hyper-exclusive, for instance, a floating pier at the end of Duke of Gloucester Street. Does that make sense? I wrote an email, and I'll say this here. Who does that serve? Does it serve the millionaires that live a block away or the millionaires that live two blocks away? Please consider more equitably distributing money when it comes to water improvement projects. Fund Burnside. Go visit Burnside. It's falling apart.
Yep. I go there every weekend, so I'm going to look into that. Thank you. Next up is Bill.
Borwigan.
Thanks, Bill.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council members. My name is Bill Borwigan. I live on First Street, 519 First Street, and I actually have water access within like two blocks of my house on three sides, so I really have a lot of empathy for people that live on voucher that have been trying to get access at Wells Cove and other parts of the city for years. I'm here to just, you know, I looked at the capital improvement program as well. I'm actually heartened that the city's really up in their game. I think it's pretty impressive. Some of the items that are in the budget that haven't been there in the past, I like, you know, on page 34, citywide public water access improvements, including Wells Cove. I think that's a great idea because that really is a desert. There's really no, between Burnside and all the way to the headwaters of Spa Creek, there is no water access, really, that people can put a small watercraft in since we lost the access at S.A.Y.C., et cetera. I like, you know, page 46, where you talk about general existing waterfront access improvements of infrastructure because we have a failing dock that's been at Jeremy's Way now for over two years. The park's been closed off. I don't know why we can't fix that bulkhead, but hopefully in this budget, we're going to be able to do that. So I think that's a great step forward. Truxton Park, we had a call this week with the harbor master. We still have, you know, Truxton Park is mentioned on page 73, but there's still that electrical problem, you know? And if we don't get kids on the water, especially our low-income kids on the water that live in a city surrounded by water, and that was one of their major access areas, I just think it's, you know, by getting people on the water, they're going to support the bay, they're going to support a cleaner bay, and we need to fix, figure out what that electrical problem is. And I know we've done a lot, but it's still not fixed. On page 74, 79, we talk about improvements on Fourth Street, which I think is a great idea, on Back Creek. To actually finally put the first floating dock in Eastport, I think that would be a great idea. On page 80, we talk about improvements to Sixth Street. Again, a floating dock at Sixth Street on the Back Creek, but for some reason, the budget cut out the pocket park. That would be a great place for a pocket park. There's room there, wouldn't interfere with other residents, and I would ask the council to consider putting the pocket park back in to the Sixth Street Waterway Improvement Project on page 80. Finally, on behalf of the Wells Cove Public Access Committee chaired by Margaret Malowski, you know, again, we have a 1992 plat that says that you have to grant access to the water at that location. We've been fighting over this for literally 32 years, and it was just the access to the water. It wasn't the land portion. Everybody agreed it wasn't part of the litigation, that the land portion should be fixed. The city planning department has created a tremendous plan to fix the land portion, and yet this week we learned that the city law office has stopped from implementing anything to actually implement that plan at the land portion that's not under appeal. And the judge already said, "We won that lawsuit. It was appealed," but it doesn't deal with the land portion. So I would, Mr. Mayor, I would ask you to ask your city attorney, "Why are we not able to move forward on improving the land at that location?" Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Bill. Anyone else like to come forward and speak? Thank you all for your testimony. I declare the public hearing closed. Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda.
Yes, sir. The next item on the agenda is public hearings, first beginning with ordinance 0724, annual budget and appropriation of property tax levy.
Anyone like to come forward and speak on 07-24?
You know, the budget.
All right, well, this is different. All right. Well, I'm going to declare the--
No complaints then.
Sorry. We're holding it open for the Planning Commission findings until they're received. Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda.
Continuing with public hearings, ordinance 02623, forest conservation plan appeals.
No one signed up to speak for 0-26-23. We're keeping that open. All right, gone once, gone twice. I declare the public hearing on 0-26-23 closed. Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda.
Yes, sir. The next item on the agenda for public hearing is R1524, FY 2025 Annual Fees Schedule.
Anyone here to speak on R15-24? Okay, I declare the public hearing on R15-24 closed. Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda.
Next item for a public hearing is R1624, FY 2025 Annual Fines Schedule.
Okay, F.E.'s back up again. Please come forward and speak.
I'll speak more briefly here. There's one particular fine in the fee schedule that I don't know how to convince you guys to actually enforce, but I'm a bicycle commuter, not computer, I'm a bicycle commuter, and I cycle to work to, over the Spa Creek Bridge pretty much every day that it's nice out. And I hit this interesting safety hazard almost daily, and that is delivery vehicles being parked in the right lane of Compromised Street coming into Annapolis proper from Eastport, parked in front of the Fleet Reserve Club, the Waterfront Hotel, Chop Tank, and they're doing deliveries, they're doing regular commercial deliveries. Each of these premises have ample parking to accommodate their delivery vehicles, but these delivery vehicles continue to park unabated in the shared pedestrian bicycle use path that is the right side of the road on that lane. I'm particularly worried and a little safety-conscious when I bike because I don't have a dedicated bike lane, something I would also love to see. A lot of us would. And so what happens is when these vehicles are parked there, I have to look over my shoulder and swerve left into typically faster overtaking traffic to get around them. I've contacted the mayor's office numerous times about this and spoken to the city spokesperson, Ms. Rastovich, numerous times about this. I don't know how to get you guys to enforce the "don't park" and "no parking" area. I've been told to contact the parking enforcement. I don't remember if it's SP Plus or Premium Parking, whichever one it is. They don't answer their phone. They just don't answer their phone in the mornings. They don't answer. I don't know how they operate, but they don't answer their phone. So I'll call the non-emergency number for the police because at one point I was told, "Why don't you try them?", and they told me they don't enforce parking. This is a safety hazard. I would love for you guys to enforce that part of the fine schedule, specifically on Compromised Street. Everywhere is fine, but this is an area of concern, and I do worry that at some point in the future, there will be a pedestrian accident because of a lack of enforcement of those commercial delivery vehicles being parked, typically one or two or three in a row. You never see a cone, you never see blinkers on. There's ample parking for these premises, these commercial buildings, to have them come around the side and operate the delivery safely. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to come forward on R16-24? I declare the public hearing closed. Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda.
Yes, sir. The next item on the agenda is R1724 for public hearing, FY 2025 Position Classifications and Pay Plan.
Nobody signed up. Okay, anybody like to come forward on R17-24? Okay, I declare the public hearing closed. Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda.
Yes, sir. The next item on the agenda is legislative action, beginning with first readers, ordinance 0624, citywide prohibition on new drive-through windows.
Could I get a motion on 0-6-24? So moved. Can I get a second? Okay, on first reader, any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed?
No.
Q. Let's refer 0-6-24 to the Planning Commission and the Rules of City Government Committee.
No, it's got Economic Matters. Thank you.
What? What did you say? I didn't hear you.
Economic Matters.
Oh, got it.
Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda.
Yes, the next item for first readers, 0924, FY 2025 Changes in Exempt Service Job Classifications.
Is there a motion to adopt 0-9-24 on first reader? Can I get a second? Thank you. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Thank you. I refer 0-9-24 to the Finance Committee, the Financial Advisory Commission, and the Rules of City Government Committee. Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda.
Yes, the next item on the agenda is 0524, City of Annapolis Plastic Bag Reduction Act.
Okay.
Second.
Right. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda.
Next item on the agenda is Resolutions for First Readers, beginning with R124, Eastport Maritime Operations Work Group.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to postpone action on this for 60 days.
Second.
Can I get a second on that? Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Is that this? Have you done this yet or not?
We did.
We've got this one, Mike.
We just did that.
Yeah, but you didn't do the referral.
I have to refer it.
You gotta refer it. I don't. Do the referrals.
Sorry. And I'm going to refer 0--
0524.
0524 to the Housing and Human Welfare Committee. Apologize. Thank you very much. Thank you.
And Environmental Matters?
And Environmental Matters. Thank you. Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda.
Yes, sir. The next item on the agenda, first reader for resolutions, is R1824, Comprehensive Plan Consideration Extension.
All right. Could I get a motion for R18-24 on first reader?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda.
Yes, sir. The next item on the agenda is R1924, Eastport Choice Neighborhood Initiative Transformation.
Is there a motion to adopt R19-24? So moved?
Second.
All those, Alderman Arnett.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to ask this to be sent to Rules and City Government and Environmental Matters, please.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda.
Yes, sir. The next item on the agenda is R2024, Public Service Recognition Week 2024.
Is there a motion to adopt R20-24 on first reader?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Savage.
I'd like to be added as co-sponsor.
Thank you. Anybody else? Ellie's in there as well. Okay, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Someone suspend the rules on that for us? I think that's--
So moved.
Thank you. All those in favor of suspending the rules say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Okay, unanimous. Is there a motion to adopt R20-24 on second reader?
So moved.
All right, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes, sir. Mayor Buckley.
Aye.
Alderman Finlayson.
Aye.
Alderman Shademeyer.
Aye.
Alderman Savage.
Aye.
Alderman Arnett.
Aye.
Alderman Tierney.
Aye.
Alderman O'Neil.
Aye.
Alderman Pendel Charles.
Aye.
All right. Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda, flying right along here.
Yes, the next item is R2124, International Firefighters Day 2024.
Is there a motion to adopt R21-24?
Second.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, unanimous. Is there a motion to suspend the rules?
So moved.
All those in favor of the motion to suspend the rules say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Is there a motion to adopt R21-24 on second reader?
Second.
Thank you. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes, sir. Mayor Buckley.
Aye.
Alderman Finlayson.
Aye.
Alderman Shademeyer.
Aye.
Alderman Savage.
Aye.
Alderman Arnett.
Aye.
Alderman Tierney.
Aye.
Alderman O'Neil.
Aye.
Alderman Pendel Charles.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right. Giving some love to our first responders. Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda.
Yes, sir. The next item on the agenda is R2224, National Police Week 2024.
Is there a motion to adopt R22-24 on first reader?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Is there a motion to suspend the rules?
So moved.
Second.
And all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Is there a motion to adopt R22-24 on second reader?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes, sir. Mayor Buckley.
Aye.
Alderman Finlayson.
Aye.
Alderman Shademeyer.
Aye.
Alderman Savage.
Aye.
Alderman Arnett.
Aye.
Alderman Tierney.
Aye.
Alderman O'Neil.
Aye.
Alderman Pendel Charles.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda.
Yes, sir. The next item on the agenda is R2324, Emergency Management and Public Safety.
Is there a motion to adopt R23-24 on first reader?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Is there a motion to suspend the rules?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor of suspending the rules say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, is there a motion to adopt R23-24 on second reader?
So moved.
At 10 to 8.
Second.
All right, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes, sir. Mayor Buckley?
Aye.
Alderman Finlayson?
Aye.
Alderman Shannon Meyer?
Aye.
Alderman Savage?
Aye.
Alderman Arnett?
Aye.
Alderman Tierney?
Aye.
Alderman O'Neal?
Aye.
Alderman Pendel Charles?
Aye.
Right.
Got one more.
Okay, Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda.
Yes, the next item on the agenda is R-1424, which is the Plastic Bag Reduction Act Fines.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adopt that on First Reader?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda.
The journey is complete, Mr. Mayor.
Feels a little Twilight Zone. Mr. City Manager?
Mr. Mayor, Council, I'd like tonight to introduce to you one of two international fellows the city will be hosting over the next month. It's through a program through ICMA, my professional organization, that's the Young Southeast Asian Leadership Institute. And tonight, Anna Romea from Indonesia is with us and is an educator and instructional designer who holds a Masters of Education. She's made a substantial contribution to teaching and online course development, particularly in the realm of sustainable life management. We're also hosting another fellow, Rafa Filanicio from the Philippines. He's the program manager of Mother Earth Foundation, an NGO that seeks to transform the Philippines into a more sustainable and climate-friendly country. Anna and Rafa are going to be spending time with Jackie, Deputy City Manager for Sustainability,